Commissioner, meeting for February the 15th to order. invocation today is by Commissioner Freeman-Hart.
By our heads, please. Father God, please open our minds and our hearts to the problems of Wayne County. Give us the wisdom to solve these problems and make our citizens' lives easier. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Amen. You'll join me in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we've got the approval of the minutes for January the 28th and February the 1st, and I'll entertain a motion.
So move.
Okay, we've got a motion for approval. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Okay. Adjustments of the agenda?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good morning. As we talked about in the pre-agenda, the number five, wanted to make sure everybody was aware of that. The public hearing request for March 1st for Mount Olive Pickle. And also, as we discussed during our agenda, pre-agenda, we added two budget amendments. And those are all the changes that we have at this time.
Okay. Need a motion for approval of the agenda?
So move.
All right, we've got a motion to approve agenda. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Okay. All right. County manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, under special presentations, motion to approve the 2022 National FFA Week proclamation, and I will turn that over to our extension director.
So, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you so much for this opportunity. Very excited to introduce to you a young man who's a future leader of agriculture in our county, no doubt. It's Mr. Luke West. You know his family well. His father Craig is with him here today, but Luke is currently the president of the Charles B. Acoch FFA chapter. And I'm sure you want to ask him a few questions when he's done with the proclamation, but I do want to welcome Luke West.
Good day, Mr. Kevin, and thank y'all for having me today. Here is the National FFA Week proclamation. Whereas FFA and agriculture education provide a strong foundation for the youth of America and the future of food, fiber, and natural resource systems; and whereas FFA promotes premier leadership, personal growth, and career success among its members; and whereas agriculture education and FFA ensure a steady supply of young professionals to meet the growing needs in the science, business, and technology of agriculture; and whereas the FFA motto, "Learning to do, doing to learn, earning to live, living to serve," gives direction and purpose to these students who take an active role in succeeding in agriculture education; and whereas FFA promotes citizenship, volunteerism, patriotism, and cooperation. Therefore, we do hereby designate the week of February 19 through 26, 2022, as National FFA Week. Thank you.
Thank you. And do we need a motion for approval of this proclamation?
So move.
All right, we've got several motions to approve. Any discussion on the motion?
I'd like, Mr. West, one quick question, if you don't mind.
All right, great, we got a question for you.
You haven't answered how many students are enrolled in the FFA program in Wayne County?
Our chapter at Charles B. Acoch has 34 members.
Thirty-four? Good.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
You know, whereas COVID has affected a lot of things in the county and globally wide, last year, the numbers are significantly down, but hopefully, in the coming years, as everything starts to spur up a little bit, we can get more members and more.
Oh, good. We appreciate what you're doing.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
We've always had a strong...
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
What made you decide to join the FFA?
Well, my family has been in agriculture for a very long time. It's really all we live and breathe for. FFA has many great opportunities for not only agriculture experiences, but leadership. FFA is mostly leadership now between SAE projects, community service projects around town. It really gives you a time to help others in need and learn some different ways of leadership.
Great.
Mr. West, we're very impressed with you. Keep up the good work, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank y'all very much.
It's true. We've always had a strong FFA organization over the years at Acoch, and he's just fallen his parents' footsteps. You know, Craig and I go back a long ways, a long, long time ago now. But we're proud of you.
Sure. Thank y'all very much.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes?
And we are, we're very proud of what you and the FFA organization at Acoch does and all over the county. And just another note, my granddaughter goes to school in Princeton, at Princeton-Johnston County, and she called me the first school year, she said, Papa, I need some help. I said, You do? She said, Yes, sir. She said, I'm taking FFA, and I got to work 10 hours on a farm. This is not a farm girl, but I am so proud of her for, you know, for taking FFA because, you know, you know what farm it is. She's not raised on a farm, so she will get the experience and, you know, knowing where her food comes from, that comes from a farm, not Walmart.
Yes, sir.
I mean, it really, and, you know, and I also, you know, she worked her 10 hours with Craig and, you know, at the meal, with Gail and them, and I appreciate what they've reached out to help her. But again, it was, it kind of touched my heart for her to be taking FFA.
Mr. SAE projects really did get you great experience in the real world, knowing actually where your food and fiber and fuel come from.
I said Craig, I meant Roger. Y'all knew who I was talking about.
All right, we've got a motion on the floor for approval of the proclamation. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand.
Mr. Chairman, if you don't want... Kevin, do you have anything you want to update since you're here? Since we got you?
He just told me he was keeping it between the ditches.
Pretty much that's what we're doing. You know, agriculture's in pretty good shape right now. Commodity prices are high, but the flip side of that is all the costs are really high. Y'all know what fuel's doing, seed, chemicals.
Nitrogen.
The fertilizer is ridiculous, all time high nitrogen and potash. So farmers are, it's going to be an interesting year, I'll just say that. You know, and we still have the lumen side effects of the Goldsboro Millen. There's been some resolution with some growers, some are still, still have empty houses, you know. And, you know, we're hoping time will fix some of that. COVID's still affecting things. We all hear about supply chain and the different things going on, but overall, we're keeping, you know, Craig's here, we're trying to keep our head up and just move forward. So that's really all I have, Mr. Honeycutt.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, under special presentations, motion to adopt Resolution 2022-5, a resolution requesting acceleration of construction schedule of projects R-5829 A and B Princeton Bypass and R-2553 B and C Kinston Bypass. And I believe Commissioner Gurley would like to read that resolution. The resolution, in support of what Craig just spoke of, R-5829 A and B Princeton Bypass and R-2553 B and C Kinston Bypass. Whereas the North Carolina Department of Transportation has identified and planned new route projects for Princeton Bypass in Johnston County and Kinston Bypass in Lenore County. And whereas both projects are scheduled for construction start in post-years by STIP. And whereas both projects are located within the Newshaw River Basin and are subject to frequent and severe flooding. And whereas the relatively flat terrain of eastern North Carolina slowed the fast-moving waters coming from higher elevations, causing a significant increase in both the depth and the breadth of the Newshaw River from Smithfield in Johnston County through Kinston to Lenore County, as the river reached record heights and overflowed its banks inundating portions of US Highway 70 with floodwater. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Wayne County supports the request of the US 70 Corridor Commission of North Carolina Incorporated to the North Carolina Department of Transportation to accelerate the construction of Plan Interstate 42 in Princeton and Kinston in order to minimize flooding of major travel routes to assure safe travel, promote commerce, and encourage economic development in eastern North Carolina. Adopted this day, 15th day of February 2022, Joe Doherty, Chairman, Carol Bowden, Clerk. And I'd like to make a motion that we support this resolution.
All right, we've got a motion on the floor. Any discussion on the motion?
I'd like to ask the question, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Gurley, how will this new road minimize flooding?
Supposedly, the construction of the road, and we had this discussion at the NPO this past Thursday, the construction of the road, they're going to... We've looked at it in the past, that we think that some of the road structures have kind of dammed-up water. The level or the height of US 70, especially in Kinston, is lower than it is because of actual elevation. The construction project of... The construction project in Kinston at the proposed route it is now is almost going to be, well, I'm probably speaking about something I probably don't need to speak about, but my assumption is it's going to be mostly bridges. So it's going to be bridged through. Now, that being said, that's not going to alleviate the flooding on the business side of 70, in my opinion. There's going to be some other things that's going to come into play on that. As far as the Princeton Bypass, I don't really think they have an issue on the Princeton side of it. Now, there is the corridors going from around New Bern, James City, James River section, the section going through, which doesn't have to do anything with this resolution, but it is the highway or Interstate 42. They're going around Havelock at the present time, and actually, they're moving ahead of schedule on that one. So as far as to minimize flood-prone areas, I don't think the road is going to minimize that, it's just going to keep the traffic off of those highways and to be able to move through.
Okay. All right, we have a motion on the floor for adoption. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Okay, thank you so much. Now unfinished business.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next, it's a motion to approve the recommendation of the Wayne County Board of Commissioners' Facilities Committee to instruct Mosley Architects to proceed with the schematic design of the combined DSS Health Department building. First, let me thank the work that has been done by our Facilities Committee, by Mosley, by our departments, by Ryan, by Kendall, by Chip, to get us to this point. This has really been vetted very, very hard, very, very well, looking at needs, but also looking at cost as well, and making sure that we try to save budget as much as possible. One of the things I asked Josh to do with Mosley was to give us a list of bullets of the process to get to this point. And there was nine bullets that we put in your agenda packet that Kayla has up. I won't read each one of those, but we have really had some extensive work done to get us to this point. The recommendation from the Facilities Committee was, we're ready to proceed with schematics. And so that is recommendation back to the full board. What we're trying to do is get buy-in from everybody, so everybody's on board, everybody's aware, and making sure that we're doing the right things to move these projects forward. Mr. Chair, did you?
Well, again, we're trying to move as quickly as we can to get to the design phase. In fact, this Thursday, we're having a facilities meeting, and we'll have some discussions in regards to those actually schematics. So we're trying to move it as we can, but at the same time, making sure that we have proper vetting all of the concerns that may occur. So at any rate, with that in mind, we need a motion to approve the recommendation of the County Facilities Committee to instruct Mosley Architects to proceed with the schematic design of the combined DSS Health Department building.
So move.
All right, we do have a motion on the floor to approve that. Any discussions on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion signify by raising your right hand. All right. Thank you. All right, then we'll move into consent agenda. We went through a discussion of the consent agenda, including the budget amendment and adding two additional budget amendments. So again, we will need a motion to approve consent agenda with the addition of those two budget amendments.
So move.
All right, we have a motion on the floor. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. And we're moving to County Manager's report.
Mr. Chair, really nothing to update, other than what's been in your weekly updates, and we're moving forward with a lot of different projects. And I wanted to also let you know that with respect to the goals and objectives that the Board of Commissioners have set, we are beginning working on some of those projects. And so hopefully, we'll bring you back some recommendations in the next couple of meetings about how we're going to move some of these issues forward. And I do want to remind you of our, one of the goals that we did have was for a joint meeting with our municipalities and also the school board will be on March 1st, so at noon. So invitations have been out. James has already sent me the bill for the Maxwell Center, so we're moving forward, and I think we'll have a good agenda as well. And that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
All right, so we will have our regular meeting on March 1st, and then from that meeting, we will recess and go to the joint meeting.
Yes, sir.
And on that program, you've got a program set aside for that joint meeting.
Yes, sir.
And that would include...
Looking at, you know, we have the grant for the infrastructure, looking at our water and sewer, so, you know, and it's really a county-wide grant if the municipalities are being involved as well. We'll have the director of the program that will be by Zoom on the big screen, talking to us about next steps and what we're hoping to get out of the grant and moving forward with options.
Well, good, good. I think that sewer's on just about everybody's mind in the county, so maybe we'll have some discussion on that.
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, good. All right, Board of Commissioners Committee reports. Commissioner Barbara Acoch.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to congratulate Mount Olive Pickle on their new success story and wish them well. Also, I went to the dedication of Andy Evans' bridge Friday at 10 o'clock. There was a big crowd there. I was really pleased to see the turnout that came out, and it was a good dedication for the family, and hopefully it'll help with some of the closure that they're going through, seeing the new bridge name up there on 222. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Commissioner Williams?
No comment.
Mr. House?
Some good news on COVID from the hospital's point of view. The COVID rate is down around 17%, so it is going down. We have 28 positive patients right now in the hospital. That's a great number compared to where we were. And right now, 99.94% of employees in the hospital have not been contact contracted with COVID. So things are looking up, folks. But if you haven't been vaccinated, I still recommend you get your vaccination. On another note, I'd like to commend the University of Mount Olive for putting together economic development strategy for the town of Mount Olive. But the study not only went at Mount Olive, but it's 30-minute drive times all around Mount Olive. And I'd like to commend Commissioner Gurley and also Commissioner Acoch for being at that meeting, as well as the county manager. You know, it was a great job.
Thanks, sir.
That's it.
Okay. Mr. Gurley?
Sir, Mr. Chairman, first, I still don't understand why we had to pay the Maxwell Center. I just don't understand that. But anyway, that's another subject, I guess. Second thing, I have the honor of serving as the chairman of the NPO and TAC for the county, taking over Mayor Chuck Allen's position. And we've had, we have several projects in the county, a lot of, several four-way stops that are going to be installed, just a few, one at Dolpate in 111, one at Zion Church Road in 111 South, and there's several more throughout the county. We have a, as I mentioned before, 117 South resurfacing project is on docket to start this spring. We're in the process of trying to talk to Norfolk Southern to see if we can fix the railroad tracks and/or remove the part that's not been used in 20 years. The, as we talked about earlier, the Highway 70 corridor, we put a proclamation together as well to, in support of fast-tracking that project. The Oak Forest Road project is on tap to come around. I think they have one piece of property that they're still trying to acquire, already giving the lady a little more time to relocate, which will come out on Fallon Drive at Berkeley. Also, the Central Heights Road project, which would quote-unquote extend Royal Avenue straight out from, between IHOP and the railroad track and curve back into Central Heights Road. So we've got several highway projects coming. I did talk to Charles Gaylord yesterday. He made a comment at the meeting about something he'd like to see done on a sidewalk project, and we're going to, we're going to try and, we're going to try and look into that with the city, that I think would help between the Boys and Girls Club and North Drive School. That's something that we've got to talk with the city about. Other thing is, Wayne and I had the opportunity to meet with J. Howell, K3 Insurance, sorry, VFIS of North Carolina, representative, actually, one of the biggest ones in the United States, and John Vale, Jim Perry, I'll make sure I don't miss anybody, Representative Jason Sane, Representative Destin Hall, and Senator Todd Johnson, pushed this cancer policy for the North Carolina firefighters. It's a, for anything, and it's got a list of cancers that it covers, mesothelioma, testicular cancer, intestinal, esophageal, multiple, myeloma, leukemia, non-Hopson lymphoma, malignant melanoma, brain, lung, prostate, colon, stomach, kidney, bladder, ovarian, and breast cancer. If, this is a pilot program for two years that the state legislature has funded in support of the volunteer fire, or in support of the fire service, and anything that was, if you, if, it doesn't cover anything prior to, diagnosed prior to January 1st of 2022. But if on January 1st, if you're diagnosed, then this is a cancer policy that is disseminated through the VFIS, and I'll see if I can give this to Joe or someone that they can actually put it on the website, so we'll know about it. I hope they'll speak about it tonight at the Farm Association. And I think that's, I think that's all I got. Thanks, sir.
Vice Chairman Acoch?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to shout out a thank you to our Fire Marshal, our OES department, and the Paul and Firefighters Foundation for the outstanding job they did in coordinating the funeral for Chief Rafford at Paul and Watson Fire Department. It's, you know, it was a very sad and difficult situation, but Chief Rafford did pass away with, you know, in light of duty. His death was in light of duty, and those organizations did a fantastic job in working with the Rafford family and honoring him, and I just want to thank them. Also, Commissioner Hardeston mentioned the Economic Development Meeting at Mount Olive College. It was an honor to be there, and I'd like to thank the business owners in Mount Olive and the farming community that showed up for that presentation, and thank the Mount Olive College for putting it on. Also, as Commissioner Barbara Acoch mentioned, the Project Butter for Mount Olive Pickle Company, glad that they were, are going to be able to expand their operation, and it's going to be right here in Wayne County. For the ones that don't know, Mount Olive Pickle brand is the number-one brand in the United States now. They're in all 50 states, and so proud of our local business, because I was in the pickle business for many, many years, and they've done an outstanding job in growing as much as they have, and they've had great leadership. I had an issue come up. I had planned on being at Andy Evans Bridge naming, but I had an issue to come up where I could not be there. Our staff and Commissioner Acoch appreciate y'all being there. And also, Mr. Honeycutt, I look forward for Thursday afternoon at 4:59 getting a phone call for you on a building that's supposed to be sold.
I like Pedron cigars, that's all I'm...
Why 4:59?
Commissioner Acoch?
Because he goes home at 5:00.
Commissioner Acoch, you're going to collect your $5, aren't you? You're going to collect the $5.
I'm not going to buy a cigar.
Oh, my goodness. In my comments today, I want to applaud our economic development and working with Mount Olive Pickle in order to retain that company here. A few people recognize that Mount Olive Pickle actually was forced in a situation of actually looking outside of not only Wayne County, but also the state of North Carolina. Sewer is important. You know, you keep hearing about sewer now, but let me just stress a few things about Mount Olive is in a moratorium where you cannot do any, you cannot add anything to their sewer system. So Mount Olive Pickle, being located in Mount Olive, if they wanted to expand, could not expand because of their sewer capabilities. We have a really nice industrial park in Mount Olive, but we can't really use that park to expand industry in Wayne County because of the lack of sewer. You can't put industry on safety tags. We go here into Goldsboro, and we find that Goldsboro announced that they were at 86% The state of North Carolina will put you in a freeze at 90%. That's a very slim margin, folks. How can you, my understanding is it got up to 89%. How can you attract industry and growth and jobs if you don't have the infrastructure and the sewer to support that? So I look forward to our meeting on March 1st, where we will have all the municipalities coming and joining with the county to actually discuss this, because it's important, folks, that we solve... that we solve our sewer problems. Now, I recognize that sewer is not a revenue source and is an expense, but if we're going to invest in economic development, we've got to invest in sewer so we can support that growth. So it's staggering numbers, and I don't know how we got to the point that we are, but we're going to have to find a path forward. So I'm looking forward that we all put our shoulders to the grindstone here and find solutions. That said, any more comments?
I got one more thing.
Okay.
What you just alluded to, and what I brought up, has got a lot in common, and that being a good working relationship with our state legislators. You know, and we're blessed, we're blessed to have some of the top, top leadership in North Carolina representing us in Wayne County. And that means a lot when it comes to needing projects that are detrimental to your community. And I just want to tell Senator Perry and Representative Bale, Representative Smith, that we appreciate their leadership, and we look forward to more working relations in the coming year. So, thanks, sir.
Okay. And just follow up to that, if it wasn't for the $23 million that we got from our legislators for the upgrades to the pump systems, some line replacements, they would have not been in Wayne County.
That's true, that's true. All right, we're going to recess our meeting and then pick up with our work session.
And John is here.
No, John?
All right, thank you.
We're adjourned.